Clarification on the agenda, commissioners. And that's Stuart Clifton, who is longtime planning commissioner for a long time, former council member, and overall good guy, is filling in as the mayor's rep, not Mina Johnson. So just a clarification for the agenda. We'll make that correction on the agenda. All right. So we'll go ahead and get the call of the Metropolitan Planning Commission to order for the April 14 regular meeting. And commissioners, the agenda was sent to you prior and was posted. And so we will need a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
No.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? And for the record, Stuart Clifton is filling in as the mayor's rep instead of Commissioner Johnson. So thank you, Stuart, for coming down and joining us today. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. We are on item C, which is the approval of the March 24, 2022 minutes. Those were also posted before and sent out to the commissioners. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Now, we're on to the item D, which is the recognition of the council members. And I saw Councilman Bradford, do you want to come up now?
Okay.
You'll wait? Okay. So I didn't see any other council members. Lisa, no, I didn't see them. Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilman, for coming. We appreciate it. All right. So now we are on item E, which is items for deferral, withdrawal. And Lisa, are you going to take us through those? Just for clarification, commissioners, just a little housekeeping. So we're not pushing, I know it's always about the microphones with us, it seems like. So we're not pushing these. Diana is. And so she can watch, and then just give her a second, and then start speaking in the microphone. So a little bit different today. All right. Lisa?
Okay. The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. On page three of your agenda, item number 1A, 2022 CP 008001, North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. And 1B, the associated case, 2022 SP 013001, Second and Van Buren. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 Planning Commission meeting. I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from both of those items. On page four of your agenda, item number 2, 2021 SP 063001, Charlotte View West. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 12 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 3, 2021 SP 081001, Oliveri Mixed Use. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. Item 4A, 2022 SP 016001, Newsome Place. And the associated case 4B, 8485 P 005, Biltmore PUD. Staff recommendation is to defer both items to the May 12 meeting. And I would note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from those items. Item number 5, 2022 SP 021001, Burke-Hamstead. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number 6, 2022 S 073001, Knight's Corner. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 26 meeting. Item number 7, 2022 SP 019001, Meridian Court. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. Item number 8, 2022 Z 039 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. Item 9A, 2022 Z 004 TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. Item 9B, 2022 Z 005 TX 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. On page six of your agenda, oh, wait. On page nine of your agenda, thank you. Item number 28, 2022 S 076001, Magnolia East. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. And item number 29, 2021 Z 114 PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 28 meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. So, audience and commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral, but let's go through these to make sure. And Lisa, make sure I'm correct. Items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4A, 4B, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9A, 9B, 28, and 29. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral, withdrawal. Is there a motion?
No.
All right. Vice Chair moves. Is there a second? Stuart, you want to say?
I would love to.
Okay. Stuart Clifton seconds the motion. Any discussion on the deferral or withdrawal? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. We are on item F, which is the consent agenda. Lisa, you can take us through those as well.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. I will now read through the items that are tentatively on consent, and will ask if there is anyone in the audience in opposition to the item. If so, please raise your hand. I will make a note of it, and we will present that item. If there is no one in opposition, then the item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 10, 2019 SP 007003, Sonia Drive Mixed Use Development. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 10? Item 10 will be on consent. Item number 11, 2021 SP 084001, Grace Park. Is there anyone in opposition to item 11? Item 11 will be on consent. Item 12, 2022 SP 018001, 1118 and 1120 Lawrence Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 12? Item 12 will be on consent. Item number 13, 2022 SP 020001, Clemmons Reserve. Is there anyone in opposition to item 13? 13 will be on consent. Item number 14, 2022 SP 025001, Jonathan Kane SP. Is there anyone in opposition to item 14? Item 14 will be on consent. On page seven of your agenda, item 15, 2022 SP 026001, 4046 and 4060 Murfreesboro Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 15? That one will be presented. Item number 16, 2022 Z 019 PR 001, a rezoning on 16th Avenue North. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 16? Item 16 will be on consent. Item number 17, 2022 Z 024 PR 001, a rezoning on Old Hickory Boulevard. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 17? 17 will be on consent. Item number 18, 2022 Z 029 PR 001, a rezoning on 3rd Avenue North. Is there anyone in opposition to item 18? 18 will be on consent. Items 19A and B, 2022 Z 034 PR 001, a rezoning to CSNS on Dickerson Pike and a PUD cancellation. Is there anyone in opposition to 19A or 19B? A and B will be on consent. 19A and B. Item number 20, 2022 Z 036 PR 001, a rezoning to RM 20A NS on Willis Street. Is there anyone in opposition to item 20? Item 20 will be on consent. Item number 21, 2022 Z 040 PR 001, a rezoning to RM 40A NS on Gallatin Pike. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 21? 21 will be on consent. Item number 22, 2022 Z 043 PR 001, a rezoning on River Drive. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 22? 22 will be on consent. Item number 23, 2022 Z 044 PR 001, a rezoning on Haley Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 23? 23 will be on consent. Item number 24, 2022 S 025001, Overstreet Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 24? 24 will be on consent. On page nine of your agenda, item number 2022 S 048001, 8392 Cub Creek Road. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 25? 25 is on consent. Item number 26, 2022 S 070001, Stewart's Ferry Meadows. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 26? 26 will be on consent. Item number 27, 2022 S 075001, Thistle Farms. Is anyone in opposition to item number 27? 27 is on consent. That's it. So I'm going to now go through and read, I'm going to now, I'm going to go through and read the captions of those items. The following items are on consent. On page six of your agenda, item number 10, 2019 SP 007003, Sonia Drive Mixed Use Development. This is a request to amend a specific plan for property located on Old Hickory Boulevard to permit a maximum of 175 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with condition and disapprove without all conditions, including additional condition regarding fencing. Item number 11, 2021 SP 084001, Grace Park. It's a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP for property located on Hillside Road to permit 30 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 12, 2022 SP 018001, 1118 and 1120 Lawrence Avenue. It's a request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SP for property located on Lawrence Avenue to permit 21 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 13, 2022 SP 02001, Clemmons Reserve. It's a request to rezone from R 10 to SP for property located on Robinson Road to permit 40 multifamily units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 14, 2022 SP 025001, Jonathan Kane SP. It's a request to rezone from CN and R 15 and R 20 to SP for property located on Pleasant Hill Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page seven of your agenda, item number 16, 2022 Z 019 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property located on 16th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 17, 2022 Z 024 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from AR 2A to CS for property located at 1215 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 18, 2022 Z 029 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from IR to MUNANS for property located on 3rd Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 19A, 2022 Z 034 PR 001. A request to rezone from CS to CSNS for property on Dickerson Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 19B, on page eight of your agenda, 4878 P 001, Desco Electrical Supply PUD Cancellation. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 20, 2022 Z 036 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS 5 to RM 20A NS for property located on Willis Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 21, 2022 Z 040 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from CS to RM 40A NS for property located on Gallatin Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 22, 2022 Z 043 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS 10 to R 10 for property located on River Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 23, 2022 Z 044 PR 001. It's a request to rezone from RS 10 to R 10 for property located on Haley Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 24, 2022 S 025001, Overstreet Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots for property located on Park Circle. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page nine of your agenda, item number 25, 2022 S 048001, 8392 Cub Creek Road. It's a request for final plat approval to create one lot for property located on Cub Creek Road. Staff recommendation is to approve, including approval of a variance to Section 425A 1C and 425A 1D of the subdivision regulations. Item number 26, 2022 S 070001, Stewart's Ferry Meadows. It's a request for concept plan approval to create 47 cluster lots on property located on Stewart's Ferry Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 27, 2022 S 075001, Thistle Farms. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located on 12th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. On page 10 of your agenda, under Other Business, item number 30, the bonus heights certification memo for 1,200 DeMumbran Street. And item number 34, to accept the director's report.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. And so commissioners, the consent agenda, you heard the consent agenda, but we'll go through this to make sure we have all the correct consent agenda items. But before we do that, we had two council members come, and both of their items were on consent agenda. And so we won't hear a presentation. So if you'd like to say something, I think this is probably the proper time. But we'll ask Councilman Bradford first, Councilwoman Henrys, just because he got here first. And so we go by the time when y'all come in first. Oh, Councilman, if you'll...
Thank you so much. I'm here to speak on behalf of District 13, item, and Jonathan Kane. We had a community meeting on this a few months ago, and it was recorded, and I placed on my social media and YouTube channel for anyone who was not able to attend in person to review. There's been no opposition from anyone within my district or in any nearby properties. Mr. Kane has expressed his desire to not only relocate his fashion design business to this parcel, but to be an engaged member of the community, hosting cleanup events, and being just a community meeting place as well. So I appreciate the, boy, the Planning Commission and the Planning Department's consideration of this, and I look forward to welcoming Mr. Kane to District 13 as a valued member of the community. Thank you.
And so that was item number 14 for the record. All right. Councilwoman?
Thank you very much, and I apologize for my tardiness. The train. I wanted just to speak briefly on item number 11, Grace Park. There were two very productive virtual community meetings, and a lot of work has been done on behalf of the developer to make sure that they're mitigating as much traffic as possible. In fact, continuing to work with neighboring developers on the best way to make sure that we're slowing things down on Hillside Drive. So I wanted just to speak briefly, to let you know that we're planning on continuing that conversation as we move toward the council work. And I'm very appreciative of developers who take the time to actually communicate to neighbors, and I just wanted to thank them for that publicly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate you guys coming in very much. All right. So the consent agenda, commissioners, these are the items, and Lisa went through these, but let's go through them again, make sure we have the correct list. So it's items number 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19A, 19B, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 30, and 34. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Vice Chair moves, and is there a second? Commissioner Hanley seconds it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted, and those items are adopted. So for the items to be considered, we are hearing one item, and that is item number 15. And so we'll get the presentation once we get kind of everybody, if everybody could leave quickly, so we can, we appreciate everybody coming down. Thank you very much. Logan, are you presenting, my friend? All right. Logan's...
These are not our normal meeting, so we're not used to the technology. Logan, you ready?
Maybe.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. Okay. Just one second, Chair. Thank you, Chair. My name is Logan Elliott with the Planning Department, and I'll be presenting item 15 on tonight's agenda. The request is to rezone to SP zoning to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site is owned AR 2A on Murfreesboro Pike and is surrounded primarily by other AR 2A zoning with an SP existing adjacent to the south that permits a garden, center, and landscape sales. Both parcels of this rezoning application contain a single-family residence, and each parcel has a single access point onto Murfreesboro Pike. A 100-foot TVA easement bisects the property towards the rear of the site with a support structure existing in the easement. The policy for the site is suburban mixed-use corridor, which intends to enhance the corridor by encouraging a greater mix of higher-density residential and mixed-use development. And the adjacent policy to the rear of the site is suburban neighborhood evolving policy. The application proposes a regulatory SP that intends to allow a mixed-use development and to provide the planned Collector Avenue that the Major and Collector Street Plan identifies to traverse this property. The plan identifies that the land uses would be limited to those permitted by the MULA and its zoning district, and that the bulk standards would also be per the MULA and its zoning district. Otherwise, the requirements of this SP indicate that with the final site plan application, the planned Collector Avenue would be provided from Murfreesboro Pike to the rear property line, stubbing into the adjacent parcel. The Collector Avenue would ultimately make a connection between Murfreesboro Pike and Maxwell Road to the rear. Maxwell Road is also classified as a Collector Avenue in the Major and Collector Street Plan. Staff finds the proposed regulatory SP to be consistent with the mixed-use corridor policy. The land uses and bulk standards of the MULA and its zoning district are consistent with the intent of this policy to enhance the suburban mixed-use corridor. The SP also provides the infrastructure that the Major and Collector Street Plan calls for, and this infrastructure additionally supports the requested intensity and style of development permitted by this regulatory SP. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Logan. We appreciate the presentation. So commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? I don't see the applicant. And so anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. So you'll come up and sit in the chair. This is not our normal thing. And then the timer is right there, and you'll have two minutes. Welcome. And please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Larry Price. I live at 100 Cambridge Close in Antioch, ZIP Code 37013. My opposition to this is that, as presented, this specific plan is unspecified. We met with the community at the scheduling of the district council member on March 23. We met with the applicant virtually for that meeting. We left that meeting, concluded the meeting, believing that there would be more community meetings for community input prior to this coming before this body. That is not the case. We gave a lot of good feedback that was useful. We gave concerns, and we gave recommendations. We have some serious traffic concerns, trying to get out from this proposed development onto Murfreesboro Road, especially anybody wishing to make a left-hand turn onto Murfreesboro Road heading east during rush hour traffic, whether that's in the morning or in the afternoon. Also deferred on today's agenda is an item for 4160 Murfreesboro Road that is deferred to April 28. That is one, there's one parcel between this proposed development and what you will be discussing in the future. One of my severe concerns is that we have this cumulative impact in southeast Davidson County where one development gets approved, and weeks later, another development gets approved. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down very much. If we have questions, we'll let you know. And anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? And since the applicant is not here, the council member is not here, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And Vice Chair, you want to go first?
My on. So...
You could speak a little closer.
Okay. Can you remind me of our process in a case like this? It seems when the applicant is not here, and the councilperson is not here, and there is opposition, that we should consider a deferral.
Call on me. Lisa, can you give us information about whether a bill has been introduced, or any timing constraints around that, please?
Certainly. So there is no council bill on this item, and we're actually, a deferral wouldn't change the council's schedule. I know a lot of times we're sort of thinking about when public hearings are, but we don't have a public hearing in June, so it won't change the council's schedule to defer a meeting.
I need to be more efficient in my comments. So given that there are no artificial reasons, or timing reasons, why we wouldn't defer, and so...
I personally think that a deferral makes sense. I think that, especially in southeast Nashville, where we have had a lot of challenges and discussions about whether infrastructure can keep up with the pace of development down there. And as the person in opposition to this pointed out, we're hearing another case that's in the immediate vicinity in two weeks. Maybe this is a chance for us to think about that a little bit more from a cumulative impact. But I would be in support of deferring. I don't know if it's a meeting or it's indefinite, just because I don't know where the applicant or the councilperson stands. So I would be open to staff's recommendation, just a meeting.
I think, yes, we've had some communications between the applicant and the council member that we've been copied on. And so I... And so I, I think that a meeting is likely an appropriate start at this time.
Okay. Well, if, if other commissioners feel like discussing, I will wait and make a motion once others have had a chance to debate.
So let's try this. Is there any other discussion from, I usually will call on every, yeah, Commissioner Blackshear.
All right. Okay. Not yet. Okay. One of the things, and you know, I do not like to debate when there's unnecessary things to be said, but one thing that the opponent said that I think would be helpful for the applicant, he indicated that there could be more conversation with the community between now and the next meeting. So to the extent that either the applicant is watching or we can reach out to the applicant, maybe that can be encouraged prior to the next meeting.
That's a very good point. And let's try this again. Is there any other discussion from commissioners? Let's try, instead of me calling on everybody, is there any other discussion? That was a very good point, Commissioner. Any other discussion? So we'll go back to Vice Chair. Do you want to make a, is it one or two meeting deferral? Did we say one? One. Are we sure that we can get a meeting and all that, in one meeting?
I would. Am I dying? I'm on. I am. I would start with one. That will allow us opportunity to talk with the councilperson and the applicant, because I understand that they have been conversate, been having conversations as well. And so I think that, that one is an appropriate start point, and then we can have those conversations.
Okay.
Vice Chair.
I will make a motion for a one-meeting deferral with the suggestion that it, that during this time period, there is another community meeting.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Hanley seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor of the deferral motion for one meeting, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. And it is deferred one meeting. And so that concludes our public hearing items, and so we're on Other Business. So before we get to Other Business, I did notice that there is a young Boy Scout in the room. And if you could come, I, I'm a big Boy Scout fan. If you could come up, are you working on a patch? Come up to the microphone up here and tell us your name and what, why you're here.
My name is Hudson Ewald. I'm from Troop 87, and I'm working on the Communications Bear Badge. And one of the requirements is to sit in on a public meeting, so I chose this one.
Well-chosen meeting. So thank you very much for coming, and thank you for, we appreciate it. So good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent work. Yeah, he might, yeah.
He's like our good luck person.
So thank you for coming. It's very important. We appreciate it. And just so you know, we're all volunteers. This is the Planning Commission, and so we do subdivisions, rezonings, and several other fun things, a lot of planning for the city. So thank you very much for coming. And we're all volunteers on the commission, except for the staff team. So, all right. So we're on Other Business, which is, we are on Historic, and Commissioner Johnson's not here, and Parks, no report from, Commissioner Haynes is not here. Executive Committee Report, do we have anything on that, Vice Chair? I feel like we've done pretty good with workshops. The commissioners have been good about attending, so I want to say thank you for that. Watch out for the next one. I'm sure the director will tell us when the next one's going to be. So Director's Report. Anything, Director?
So we are working on the CIB, which is always a heavy lift, and we're looking forward to working with each one of you on the CIB presentation. And I will work with you, Chairman, on getting dates for the next work session, but I do appreciate everyone's attendance. At the last meeting, it was great. So we've got a lot of really great and interesting projects that are on the horizon that we'd like to brief the commission on, so I'm looking forward to that.
I'm glad we could keep Greg Claxton busy. He did redistricting, now he's doing CIB. It's good for.
We actually like him. We're not trying to punish him, because he's so, he's great.
All right. All right, legislative update. Councilman?
Thank you so much, Chair. Just want to thank planning staff for the continuing diligence on the East Bank Planning Study. It's going to take a little bit longer to come before you, but we had a fantastic Neighborhood Advisory Committee meeting on Monday. Anna Greider and other staff presented some information. Appreciate all of our neighborhood leaders, as well as kind of faith community and institutional leaders who've been a part of that Neighborhood Advisory Committee for so long, who were able to join us on Monday. We are excited to kind of reengage with community engagement a little bit, since we've had some work that's gone on, and hopefully things with COVID will stay in a, in a good place. Some of our neighbors are excited to do things like even door-to-door canvassing to make sure that we're reaching some of the neighbors in the, in the East Nashville community, and really excited to, to get that started, working with those volunteers. So just want to keep everyone apprised of that, and I'm really proud of that. Mayor Cooper will announce his state of Metro, I think, just before our next meeting, so we're all looking forward to seeing what Mayor Cooper's operating budget recommendation is. My hope is that we'll have lots of additional staffing for planning, because we know how overworked planning is, but I look forward to seeing that in the next couple of weeks. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and I'm sure we'll need your help on those budget requests. I think our budget request is a little more robust than in past years, so we'll see how that goes. All right, so that concludes our meeting, and I want to thank everyone for coming down, and especially our local Boy Scout. So thank you, everyone, and is there a motion to adjourn?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.